It's 5:30. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to orders. Could everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, and it is one with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to look at the agenda for modifications or additions. I'd like to, on a consent agenda, move Items C, D, and E to items for commission action. Also note that on Item D in items for commission action, there is an addition for paving the repairs or the temporary patch on Peter Pan. We'll be discussing it also. Commissioners, do you have any other items to add?
No, those were the items I was considering.
Okay, then if not, I'll entertain a motion. We can get a drink.
I make a motion that we accept the common consent agenda, Items A and B.
And the others?
And we're going to take into consideration C, D, and E.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as modified?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Appointments, we have an open position for the Rec. Commission, and I'd like to recommend that we reappoint Tony Turner.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Also, we have an appointment to fill in expired term on the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to recommend Michelle Anderson. For that position. Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We have city license indicated on the agenda. I don't believe any action is required to accept those. That's for information only. So at this time, we'll go to public hearings. So I would like to open the public hearing for 419 South Second. Don?
Yes, we've received numerous complaints on this property. It's been vacated. It's been vacant for several months. So we've started proceedings to condemn this property in hopes that the owner can do something with it, or if not, then move towards demolition. I think we had a call, I believe, back in November. Originally an electrical problem. Went out there and found that there were some gas problems. Gas company came out, found multiple leaks, turned the gas off at that location. It's been off since that point. So we consider that structure to be dangerous and unsafe.
Do we have a representative of the owner present? No representative. Anyone in the public would like to express their concerns or their interest in the property? With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion. Commissioners?
Do we know anything about the owners, Don? Any contact?
They had changed ownership. So when the original complaint, I had it in November, has since been sold. Spoke to them, and they said that they were going to try to rent it or live in it, but they weren't sure what they were going to do. Told them that we needed to kind of look at it together. There were several appointments set to look at it together. Those appointments weren't kept. So we've done inspections on the outside and what we know about. And hopefully, if we proceed as we anticipate, we can hopefully work with them towards doing something.
Have you explained to them how the condemnation process works?
Yes, explained the process with them, how it would work.
Great.
So you're considering this more of a blight than a structural issue?
Well, there are structural concerns as well. You can tell from, there's blight issues, but there's wiring issues. There's gas issues. There's interior stair issues. There's several issues that are with this.
Okay.
But definitely a blight issue.
Yeah, I actually looked at that property here a while back, and it does have a lot of issues. That's why they wanted to rent it out. And with the multiple gas leaks and the electrical problems, they were just unable to do that.
The scary thing about it was it was being rented out at that time.
Okay. And it was a hazard at that point?
Yes.
Have you talked to the new owner in identifying what's been determined to make it unsafe so they would have a list to work from?
Well, we attempted to set several appointments. Those appointments weren't kept to do that, so.
They never responded back to your calls to say?
They responded. They agreed to appointments, but when we went there several times, they didn't show up to the appointments.
Okay, they didn't show up?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
None for me.
If there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2018-022, condemning 419 South Second Street as dangerous and unsafe, providing 30 days from publication of the adopted resolution to diligently pursue repair or removal.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. This time, I'll open the public hearing for 221 South 15.
This is one that I've received several complaints about. It was being occupied at one time, rent to own. After it was vacated, received another phone call on it about the condition, contacted the owner about that. We did meet out there, did do an HQS inspection. And I think of the approximately 90 items, I think it failed on over 60 of them. So there were a number of items that need to be done. The owner has expressed some interest in repairing this and getting it to where it will pass inspection. I feel like if we were to go forward with the condemnation procedure, if that's their intent, that we could have an outline and a schedule and a way for them to plan out how they want to bring that back into, so that it would pass the HQS inspection.
Okay.
I believe that the owner is here tonight.
That's what I was going to go. If you've covered your part, I'll ask for the property owner. Would they like to address the commission?
Yeah, my husband's been...
Would you please come to the microphone, please? And would you give us your name, too, please?
Emma Watts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my husband's a truck driver. He's gone Monday through Friday, sometimes Monday through Saturday. Okay? We know the people that we had it contracted deed to had literally destroyed the inside. You've seen the pictures that I've taken of everything inside. I've kind of cleaned up the inside before...
Don?
Your name's Don came in. But I did show him the pictures. We do plan on trying to fix it up, but we're limited on time. My husband works. He's gone. And I'm here, but basically, I don't have the strength and the ability to do everything. Okay, I was told to tell y'all this coming week, the Fourth of July weekend, he will be home in the evenings. We are going to fix the porch because it's caving in. We have the tiles for the roof for over the porch that we're going to be doing this coming week. We do owe money still on the house. It is not a rental rental place. We're trying just to get rid of, sell it. So there will be nobody else in that house until they purchase it from us. We're not going to do the contracted deed anymore. Because, I mean, once these people decided they were going to leave, they went around and busted windows. And I have, I don't want to say it because it's gross for the upstairs bathroom, what they did in it. And it's very frustrating. But we are trying that we're going to get this place fixed up, to sell it, to get out from underneath it. We don't want it. But we do owe money on it, so.
Okay.
It is a nice old house, but it's got a lot of TLC that we got to do. I know one time last year or two years ago, we had to put siding on because somebody tore out the side window and left it with just tar paper. So we went out and bought the siding. And when these people moved into that house, it was livable. There was nothing wrong. All the windows were there and whatnot, and they just literally trashed the house. And we will be suing them because I have their contracted deed saying they're responsible. I know that they got a house out in Cherryville, you know, that they got, that was given to them and stuff. So we got to get a lawyer to turn around and countersue them for all the damages that they've done. So all I can say is, give us some time. If we have to rope off the front porch, there was no trespassing signs up there. What happened to them, I don't know. But we will get that front porch, which is really bad because it's dropped. They took the braces out, and it's kind of fallen for the new gas line that they had to put in. So we got to go back and jack it back up and put it back structural sound for the front porch. So all I'm asking is, give us some time.
Do you?
Okay. Would you want to have a seat up front? We'll go for, see if there's anybody public that has a comment or question. Then we'll ask you questions direct. Is there anyone from the public that would like to express their interest in the property? Okay, if not, then I'll close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion. Lois, do you... Mrs. Watts, would you want to come back to the microphone, please? Sorry.
Sorry.
Will you share it, Don?
Yeah, you can share mine.
Okay.
I, my question was, would your husband, does he have help? Would there be other family members that would help? Being that he's on the road majority of the time, is there family members that would be able to come in and help so where the process would move along?
His brother rides with him. And that's all he has. I have no family back here. I'm from California, so. I have no family. Other than that, we have nobody.
Ma'am, I'm really sorry that you had such bad luck with the renters. That breaks my heart to hear that. But do you understand that even if we move forward to condemn it, you can still fix it up? That just, basically, if we move forward with condemnation, we want you to get with our city inspector and show him a plan to get it renovated over a reasonable amount of time. It doesn't mean you can't move forward with your project.
Even though it's on contract, there is a mortgage on it.
Right. That doesn't affect anything, does it, Don?
I think the lending institution would get involved then.
I would be willing to work with her if she wants to set out a plan to do this, of course.
Right.
I mean, for us, the ideal outcome is that this does get rehabilitated.
Yeah, absolutely.
This does go back to us. That's the outcome that we all want, so.
Yeah, we'll be your biggest supporters because we'd like to see it.
My concern would be, you know, just time and money. If you feel like you have the time and money, I wouldn't want you to invest time and money if you didn't feel like it could get you the outcome that you want. If you felt like it could get you the outcome that you wanted, I'd be willing to work with you to work out a plan and work out a schedule and have regular inspections so we can make sure that we're staying, meeting the timeframes to move forward.
That's the way these almost always work. If somebody wants to renovate it, we're certainly willing to work with them. And again, that's our goal, to get it renovated, but get it livable.
Uh-huh.
One of the things that, you know, I noticed, of course, is the exterior. The lawn's not been mowed, the debris around it, and the missing windows and things like that. When you look at a schedule, of course, those would put a long way towards making it more presentable to the neighborhood, to maintain the lawn and address the exterior issues. You know, the goal is, like Don said, to work a schedule, but be realistic and do the important. Let's say the exterior and the lawn first, then work interior.
Yeah, we're planning on, he knew that the yard needed mowing. But it started raining because we have another house, and he barely got that almost. But yes, this weekend, the yard will be mowed.
It's been hard to keep up this year.
If we go ahead and condemn it, you're not going to get a loan, be able to get a loan to fix it up. You've got to use your own finances then.
Well, we really don't want it condemned because it needs some TLC. We got, you've seen the tiles for the roof. They're in the garage. You know, for the front porch, we've got new tiles up there. We got to get some two-by-fours. And he's going to rip out the whole porch and put all new wood down.
If you had 30...
I was going to say, if we could give her 30 days to see how this goes for the 30 days, then we could, I'd have a better feel on how it would go forward. I would recommend that we hold off doing anything on the roof over the porch. Let's work on the porch itself.
Yeah.
Because we need to discuss the roof, how many layers, et cetera, it has on there, what all is going to be involved with doing the roof. But work on getting the yard cleaned up, the debris cleaned up, and maybe stabilizing the front porch. Then in 30 days, we can visit, and I think we'll have a good feel for how we all, all parties want to move forward on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So your recommendation, Don, what, to adjourn?
Be adjourned for 30 days.
Okay. The commissioner, how do you feel?
Yeah, I think that's a great plan.
Yes, so do I.
Okay. Adjourn would be the correct term, isn't it? So with that...
Adjourn till the second meeting in July?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's exactly...
So what we could do, I'll get with you after.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, do you have Don's card or his phone number?
I'll meet with, as soon as we get done with this agenda, I'll meet with her before they leave.
Okay, okay, good.
We'll set an appointment.
Deal.
So...
Just wait a couple of minutes after I get there.
Sure.
Do you want to make a motion?
July 26.
Okay, I move we adjourn to the July 26 meeting.
Got it.
And may I all get over there and pull everything to the front?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn till the 26th of July. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you coming in.
I'd like to open the public hearing for 905 West Sycamore.
This is one that we had received complaints about. At one time, it was open, full of debris, different things in the yard, and we had received a complaint about it. Moved forward with following up on that complaint. Shortly after moving forward, we understood that it changed hands. So this was sold to a new owner in Wyoming who seems to be very proactive in wanting to get this rehabilitated. So the debris that's inside has largely been removed. Windows have been replaced. I've contacted, they've contacted a local electrician to get power and to work on getting that restored in the structure so that it can be totally rehabilitated. So I feel comfortable in the direction that we're heading. It is my feeling and recommendation, after you discuss it, that we adjourn for 60 days on this to see the progress that goes forward on it.
Great. Good news.
Yes. Great news.
September 27.
Is there a representative of the owner present? Anyone from the public interested in the property? Okay, then we'll close the public. Pardon?
That house, there's a lot of lead inside that. She used to live there. And that and her kids had lead poisoning from inside. DHS and all them had tested, and it is that house that has a lot of lead.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's some of the things that...
Those will be items that will work to rectify and to... No, thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's good information to know.
So we're saying 60 days.
We'll close the public hearing now for commission discussion. Don, your recommendation?
Recommendation would be to adjourn for 60 days till September...
That's 90 days.
August. No, 60 days would be August, something. The, our second commission meeting in August.
I had it him. It was on the RCA for September, so that's what I had.
August 23rd.
Yep, August 23rd.
Commissioners, what, you got comments?
No, I had a chance to visit with some of the people that were cleaning out the house and doing the yard work here quite a while back. And I saw, we got a copy of the letter from the lady that had bought, purchased the house. And they were, she's working to try to get that up to standards. And yeah, I think that's a good idea. Adjourn it for 60 days and bring it back on the 23rd of August.
Commissioner?
I agree.
If there's no further discussion, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn the property at 905 West Sycamore Street for 60 days and take up on August 23 commission, city commission meeting.
Okay, you have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, with the motion is second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next item on the agenda, let's go back to Item C of the consent agenda. Item C is, consider approval of blocking off Misabele Avenue from Oak Street to Mickey Mantle Way for the Indy Goes Back to School Party on Monday, August 13, 2018. The email we had referenced the west entrance to the swimming pool, and I had Kelly confirm if it was intended that Fifth Street be blocked or if it was Misabele Way. She did confirm it was Fifth Street. So I want to make sure that the commissioners are aware that it is the section of Fifth Street from the pool and the road in between, the pool and the tennis courts and Mickey Mantle Way, the road north of the 4H Building. I asked to confirm that, since it is a through street, that there would be no problem with police or fire access to the area. City manager Whitehead did confirm with department heads that it's not going to create any issue on that street, so. Any questions from the commission?
None.
None. No, I'm glad you brought that up. That's what I thought they meant when I looked at that.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request from USD 446 to block off North Fifth Street from Oak Street to Mickey Mantle Way on Monday, August 13, 2018, for the Indy Goes Back to School Party.
Okay, a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is Item D. Consider approving a lease agreement with the Kansas East Region Department of Children and Families, KDCF, and the City of Independence for use of space in Building D.
As you know, Mayor, back in May, back in May, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with DFC, DCF, excuse me. In case of an emergency situation, they needed to relocate because of issues where they were. They exercised that, as you know, and have moved into Building D and leased. And when we did the memorandum of understanding, they always said, well, you know, it may turn into a lease issue if we stay there. We need to stay there. And that's where we are now. They're proposing a lease, which you have attached. It's been reviewed by the city attorney. And so we entered in good faith with that department to assist them in their relocation. And we understand they've severed the lease and so, and they're there. They're moving, they're continuing to move their equipment and furniture and so forth. So, but they've been there probably a couple of weeks now under that MOU.
Okay. We do have a request to address the commission, but I think first, the reason I had it pulled off the consent agenda in the lease agreement, Article 19 talks about energy, and it's got some specific requirements. Energy efficiency, minimum ventilation, standards, controls, also an energy audit. I think for, my concern is the requirements are pretty stringent on requiring us to modify a system to meet their demands. For a lease with the terms that's been outlined here, I don't think we should agree to those conditions. That if they would agree to lease the space with the HVAC system as is, would be fine. But to require an energy audit and to comply with the energy standards that they set, I don't think it's something that we should consider.
Jeff can elaborate, but also they said they would defer that. They understand that they're not expecting us to do all those things. This is their standard agreement, if you will. So they've deferred that as well. Now whether that, we need an addendum or not to state that, we could certainly get that.
Yeah, the only thing valid is what's in writing, and that's what we would be signing. And I would rather see the addendum come before us signing and executing it because once we sign it, it's there, then we're acknowledging that part. And it just, it would open up an argument for us with a signed agreement with that remaining. So if they're saying it's not, then they need to get it in writing to exclude Article 19.
Jeff, can we just draw a line through that initially?
We're dealing with estate. They're, they like boilerplate language. The email I saw, I think somebody from the city asked them about paragraph 19. And the email I saw, the Department of DCF or Department of Administration said, basically, don't worry about that. We probably won't be in your building that long. Worst-case scenario, we would do it at the end of the year. Plus, we've got language in there that we can give them notice to terminate at any time on 90 days' notice. So if that became an issue...
an issue, we could terminate. And we do have an email, which is a written document, saying they would defer that to the end of the term, so.
Do we, do we have that email? Commissioners have that email?
I don't think it's attached here now.
I was just copied with it within the last week.
Yeah, I think it should be an amendment to the, to the agreement. I think it's just bad business to sign something knowing that we don't want to comply to work it out later. But the state is pretty particular on their energy requirements. Every project we do is they're requesting compliance with standards and, so I think it's, if they're saying that they're not going to enforce it, then they should be willing to give us an amendment to add to that before we sign it.
I don't want to mislead you. I think what they're saying is, there's no timeframe on when the audit has to be done, so I don't think they can tell us when it has to be done, and they were saying that they would push it to the end of the term, and if I'm reading between the lines, that they feel they'll possibly be out of there by then.
They expressed to me very clearly, this is a year and they'll be gone.
I think getting them to amend anything is just difficult. We could more likely get an addendum saying that they agreed to defer this audit to till after the first term's over or something, and we could renegotiate it if they want to extend it, which we don't think they do want to extend.
Yeah, I think, I still, you know, think we should have it amended before, never, never assume, particularly, well, dealing with the state. So that's, I've shared my opinion. Other commissioners comment?
Yes, I do. On this, on the May the tenth, I pulled up the agenda item and what we looked at, and it states here, which we agreed to identify an alternate facility if an emergency or disaster makes space in which the Independence DCF office is currently housed, either unusable or unavailable, so. So what was the emergency to where they would move from an existing building that they, that they had signed a lease agreement on, to come to move to the Independent, Independence Building D?
I mean, that was their, that was their decision. I don't know all the details, I, other than they had a lot of issues with the building, and they felt it was obviously unsafe, they wanted to leave. They had relocated twice before that to the Memorial Hall on a temporary basis, and then came back, and finally came to us requesting that MOU, just in case it happened again or other issues came up, and that's my, all my understanding. Fire marshal had to be brought in to look at the building, there's issues from the fire marshal that still need to be addressed, and again, it's, it's between the owner of the building, DCF, and the fire marshal, I'm not in the middle, I'm not...
Right.
I'm not involved in that process.
Yeah, right. I understand that, but we, we have a gentleman here that's, that's going to address this issue, I guess.
Well, that's, why don't we allow, Tim, do you want to address the commission now? Then we'll come back to whether we...
Thank you, gentlemen. As some of you know, my name's Tim Yonak, I'm the, one of the two owners of the Arco Building, and I've been in Independence with the building since two thousand and six, and we have purchased the building for Wells Fargo in two thousand and thirteen, when Wells Fargo was going to, their intention, when they took ownership and control of the building, was to close it up, put plywood on the windows, and leave it sort of to whatever devices end up happening to it. And so we purchased it, and we've put, as you know, and I've been before you before, we've put a sizable amount of income into that building to make it, improve it from when we took it over. In December of two thousand and fifteen, DCF executed a ten-year lease with us, and part of the contingencies for that was that we built them out a new space that they requested on our third floor. With John Heckman's able experience and, and ability, we put a new space for them, eleven thousand square feet. It is top of the line as far as exactly what they wanted, and they moved in in February of two thousand and seventeen. We've had some, and also make mention that, that we may have been Don's first building he looked at when he came on board with the city, and so things were, things were well. In two thousand and eighteen, DCF had a new secretary come aboard with the entire agency, and that was in January, and then in February, there seemed to be some, there's issues that they brought up for their new space. Currently, we have, we believe we have a ten-year lease with them, ten years from two thousand and sixteen, so we still have some time for that to run, and two five-year extensions with them. Currently, the building is occupied and safe. I know Mr. Whitehead reflected some fire marshal issues, as he said he didn't really know much about that, I think that was just from, he received that from DCF, and currently we are, as far as we know with the fire marshal, in compliance with what the fire marshal requested for us. We have a building that is occupied and open. We also have a, there's four state tenants in the building currently, and then other private tenants. The fire issue came about with a young man that we suspect, but it was never, as to our knowledge, charged, had set three separate fires in three separate days. We don't currently view any emergency at the moment. Each, after each fire, when DCF closed for that day, the building was open the next day or the next day after, and so currently, the building and the space is available to them, and then it's also safe, and they, we expect them to be in that space. So we disagree with any contention that they have any valid reason to, in essence, terminate our lease. In fact, the, part of their termination deals with reasonable time, and as the council was discussing, as what, how long we have to do things, the city does in the current lease before you, my experience is that that time period can change depending upon their contentions at various moments. I know the city is in a, a position where you have building D, and there's a interest in moving, possibly, you know, filling that building, or at least moving people into it. From our perspective, we have a valid lease with DCF, we intend to enforce that lease, we expect them to be in a building, in our building, they're currently paying rent for our space. We think, and I would submit to the council, that, the commission, that, you know, if this lease is signed with DCF, that creates another, several, several issues and several other things that may happen in different forms. That's the practical part. From my personal perspective, if DCF leaves our building for good, that, that diminishes our value of our building considerably, and our tax role, and our tax, even what we're assessed at, should go down exponentially, which I don't think is a positive for anybody in the community. I say something you may not hear often, I don't mind paying taxes, I like paying taxes if the value of what I have goes up as an investor, and so from a value standpoint, that's problematic for me. I also wonder is, because I've been considering...
What?
Yes?
I thought on the items directed, that we didn't have to follow the three-minute.
Yeah, but you had a... Okay, that's fine. I'll just let you know.
Okay, thanks.
And then, the concern that I have, I have been wondering, why would DCF, going through what they've gone through with us, and why are they pushing to unilaterally terminate a lease, that I don't agree with that termination? I think Mr. Whitehead said earlier that they are only interested in staying in the city building for a year. I would wonder, and what has been presented to me this afternoon, was that, I'm not sure what their intentions are, if their intentions are to try to get out of my eight-year lease, and then move into the city's building for a year, and then leave Independence and Montgomery County altogether, and move all of their facilities to Parsons or some other place. I don't see, from a personal standpoint, as an interested individual here in Montgomery County, that that's a, a positive move. The second, I also have some thoughts as to the Department of Labor, they're in our building, they've got a small...
Well, that, that's the next item.
Okay.
So, yeah, well, I think that you're right, your agreement and contract with DCF is you need to work out the problems with it. What we had was presented an emergency clause, that if something came up that they had to relocate, that we would provide them space, and we don't know what that was, and that's why we had the space, and they made the decision to relocate. The agreement is just stating like for a year or month-to-month. I think the, the thing needs to be worked with DCF, that you and DCF can, can correct the issues there. I, you know, I for one don't want to take your, your tenant. What we're doing is just providing space on a temporary basis for them to work out whatever, you know, whatever the problem was that they relocated out. I had hoped that that could happen quickly, but as far as, as us trying to solicit them for tenants, that's not our intention. I think we support our property owners here, and definitely, like you said, it's better to keep them in your building to keep your value up, but they came to us for emergency conditions and never explained why, and they just said they executed that desire to relocate, and then that temporary state or condition we had, what was it, what was that agreement called?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Memorandum of Understanding, just identified the space, and that this is the actual agreement that requires them to lease the space in conditions or pay X number of dollars per month to be there. You know, I...
If I may, my, my concern is that I understand that all state agencies have to have a backup plan and emergency place. I understand that. I also, my question is, it's my understanding that they complied with that through the, basically, memorandum of understanding for emergency, emergency situations. I don't agree with the emergency certificate, the emergency situation that they are claiming, but I can understand that. I have a further question of, now they're asking for a year lease, that seems to be the MOU, seem, would appear, that that was done for the emergency situations. Now there's a secondary agreement for a year lease, which I think goes way above and beyond the emergency situation, because I understand they're, they're right now, even though I don't agree with it, under that MOU, but now they're asking for a year lease. That makes the city move, in my opinion, from being, offering in an emergency situation to tenant, to a direct competitor of mine in the city, with the understanding that this gives them grounds and gives them an out, so that in the City of Independence, with their lease with the city, they can now leave within thirty days' notice and leave town, in essence. And with me, they don't have that opportunity because we have an eight-year lease, at least from a legal standpoint. And so my question and my opposition is not to the MOU, I understand that, but now we're moving to another step, which is a year lease, and so therefore, the city is no longer providing emergency space, they're now a competitor of mine.
Yeah, I could see, I can see your concern, and I think the, our concern, or my concern as a commission, is to keep them in Independence, preferably not in a city-owned building. And, you know, I guess when I read the lease, I, I saw it as with the month-to-month statement that it, it was stating a year, but if you can work out the, the issues that they relocated for with them, then you can have them back at any moment.
That's not my understanding, because they, they have a lease currently with my building, and they are, you know, laterally, and I think inappropriately, trying to terminate that. If they have a new lease signed with a new entity, whether it was the city or someone else, that is in itself a, a binding agreement, whether it's for thirty days or a year. For me to get them back in the building, I would have to go back and negotiate with the Department of Administration and execute an entire new lease, because mine, in essence, you can't have two leases at the same time. I guess they could, but they're not going to pay me and pay the city. And so that's my concern, that that agreement that they presented to you is one that allows them, in essence, to lease from the city, tell me goodbye, and then gives them an out, and I can't speak for their intentions, but the only logical explanation that I could see is that this gets them out of an eight-year agreement for Independence, Kansas, and into a month-to-month for Independence, Kansas, which, depending upon their secretary, depending upon their budget, depending upon the state, may be something that's attractive to them. I know that our local elected state leaders have worked really hard with us, with DCF, as to keeping them here in the community, because I think it would be egregious for the most vulnerable members of the, of the city, those that need food assistance and such, to have to drive, travel, or even go online, drive or travel to Parsons, or even go online and have access to what they may or may not have to get necessities. And I think that in some ways, the city, you're doing what's, what's best for the city, and I understand where you're looking at, and I don't think you've, anyone to my knowledge has tried to, to take them or poach them from my building, but in essence, I think that in some ways, the city is being utilized for the state's own purpose here. That's the only thing I could think about, and in that regard, that's concerning as a building owner, and as someone who has invested in the City of Independence, both money, time, relationship with people, that's concerning.
Okay, well, thank you. I hope that you and the state can come back together, because it's an asset in the community.
I agree.
With, with that, do you have any, any questions?
No, I do, too.
I have no questions.
I do, have, has, has the state given you notice of their intention prior, prior to this, of what they were, what their intent was?
They had sent, after, after Ms. Myier Hummel took over in January at DCF, they had sent me notice that, that we needed to resolve some issues. On May eighth, I had sent them my, what, what we thought was going to, as far as remedy some of their ADA concerns, and these are ADA concerns, not, I'm not, I did not dispute them, but some of them are at least interesting and maybe questionable, things like, they had asked for us to put their window at thirty, at twenty-six inches, thirty-two inches. We put it at twenty-six, when we built that out two years before. Now that's an ADA concern for them. So we don't agree with all of their things, but in a sense of cooperation, I've tried to do exactly what they wanted, and, and so they replied notice to us. I gave them a schedule of when we'd finish all of their things on May eighth. Evidently, they came here before the council after that. They did not reply to my schedule until early June. I believe that would have been June fifth, and they, in essence, gave me a little over three weeks to get them finished. And so it's some irony when we discuss, and the commission was discussing, them giving time spans. Their time span are reasonable, and maybe somebody else's may be two different things. That's my personal experience with them.
Well, I think that's what you need to work with the contact at the state on the agreement to work it out. What we need to, to look at is with, with our, our contract that we have now is, is just on those bases of a one year with month-to-month, I think we need to have it revised or an amendment added before we, we... I think we need to have it revised or an amendment added before we approve it to address the energy issue up front, so we don't have any problems. So at that, if-
If I get the state to approve an addendum that says the provisions of paragraph 19 shall be deferred to the entity agreement?
I could make a motion to see if the other commissioners would be in agreement, and then- So I'd make a motion that we sign the lease agreement for KDCF with the stipulation that Article 19 is removed from the requirements. And if we get, then if we get that amendment from the state, then-
Mr. Mayor?
Words to that effect?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, may I?
Yeah.
I believe that if the commission signs that agreement, that DCF will never come back to the building, it will be gone from Independence, Kansas, within a year, as Mr. Whitehead suggested.
I didn't say that. I never said that. I never suggested they would leave. I said, "They've committed to stay in Independence." That's our whole, our whole goal is to keep them in Independence.
I believe-
And you misstated that. I did not say that if they, if they, we entered into this, that they would leave after a year, then they would leave Independence. That's not, I've never said that.
You said they would leave the building. I apologize if I misspoke.
They said they could go anywhere.
Correct.
Before they came here, they looked at going different cities. Again, I'm not in the middle here. You've got to work it out with DCF.
And Mr. Whitehead, I agree with that. It's not my intention to be aggressive or oppositional to the city, because the city has been a great partner with us, and we continue to support the city. But in this case, if the city signs, executes an agreement, and becomes my competitor, and in essence, whether, whatever the intentions are, if DCF moves there for a year, they are leaving my building permanently. Because I can't see a possibility of, in essence, them signing a new lease. That's not your concern, however, that if we end up going through some issues with them, you know, there is some question as to, you know, how involved the city would be in that process.
I think we have to make, as far as the commission, we have to make a decision based on the information that we have. We acknowledge that there's a dispute between DCF or the State of Kansas Department of Administration and you on the lease agreement. My emphasis is for that to be worked out and resolved, so they can move out. But what our point tonight for consideration is, under a previous agreement that they've allowed to operate under to temporarily relocate to Building D, the agreement is, as far as understanding here, is it is a temporary relocation. So our decision is based upon it being just that, a temporary relocation with a 12-month period. After 12-month period, we would reconsider and then address issues at that time. But look at acknowledging also that this contract can be terminated with 30-day notice. So our desire is that you can resolve issues with DCF quickly, and that they can enact that 30-day notice and terminate occupying Building D and return back to the ARCO building. That's my hope. But as far as I see for us as commissioners, ours is to consider the contract here as a temporary agreement with the State of Kansas. So with that-
Can I make one more comment? Kind of make one more comment.
Let's go to motion. I'm going to call for a motion now.
There is a motion.
Would you read it?
I have to back up a little bit here. Mayor stated, "I move that we sign the lease agreement with KDCF with the stipulation that Article 19 is removed from the requirements."
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And, thank you, Tim. And item E of the consent agenda is consider approving a lease agreement for the Kansas Department of Labor, KDOL, and the City of Independence for space in Building D. My concern with that agreement is the same, it's the same wording, like our city attorney mentioned, the state has used a boilerplate agreement. And my concern is the same as in the previous agreement we just discussed. So, and your concerns are the same in this also. So-
They are somewhat different.
With this, I think I would call for a motion, and basically the same motion that I made previously. So if you would read that motion back. Unless there's a comment?
Yeah, there is. I don't like the idea of tenants coming to the city, for whatever reason, and renting space. This is just a one-person office. There are other people in town that have office space available. I know we've already looked at the previous item and gone past, that we shouldn't be in competition with people that already have space to lease here in this city. They've made a considerable investment in their property, and we should not be competing with them. This is a one-person office. There is space throughout town that they could go to and lease, than necessarily have to come to Building D. I just don't agree with that. That puts the city at a definitely an advantage when they become leasers of a building. And I understand his concerns. If I had spent several hundred thousand dollars trying to make improvements to a facility, to their specs, for them to lease, and then for them to... What we had looked at previous on May the 10th was an emergency situation. I have yet to hear what an emergency situation was. I'm sorry that Mr. Yannick and the tenants, the State of Kansas, could not work without. I wish they would. I just don't like the idea of the city getting into the leasing business, for whatever reason. The original intent was for an emergency. I considered that building caught on fire, you don't have, you're unable to occupy it for an extended length of time, the building got flooded, it's not occupied for a good period of time. I can understand that. If it was going to be more than a week at a time, then they identified that they would have to move to a facility that was available, that would be big enough to accommodate them. And when they looked through the city, Building D is, the previous item that we looked at, was big enough to hold all the people in. But if I was an owner of a building, and I felt like, for whatever reason, tenants were leaving me, and I didn't think the reasons were valid, or I had met their conditions, that they were just going to walk out of a long-term lease and go to the city, I wouldn't be very happy either, if I spent that kind of money.
They did look, they did look at space, other space in town. The problem is that the State of Kansas has to have ADA accessibility and bathrooms, and there's very few buildings that comply with ADA requirements in town. So basically, their option was to relocate to Parsons, to the KDCF building there, or to find accessible space here in Independence. And the only accessible space that met their demand was there. So even a one-person office still has to comply with all the ADA conditions. And that was what, because they did look at other space before they came to Building D.
I understand that this particular office, when that department's only going to be open for two years, maybe, and then that office will be phased out. But there again, what's the emergency to make this person leave, this one-person office?
Again, I-
Yeah, I-
Just being in that building was, and the other state agencies are moving out, so they, I guess they felt the same thing, different department, but they must have felt the same pressures that DCF did. Again, I can't speak for DCF or KDOL or-
I understand that, but if you already, if you have tenants there that are with the state, that are still in the building, then it kind of makes you wonder, it, to me, it looks like a contrived issue to get out of a lease, to come to a facility that's, quote, "more accommodating" for them.
Usually, I've worked on a project-
You know, we weren't marketing the building.
Sure, I understand that.
You know, they came to us, especially in that, with the MOU initially, we have space. And it is not uncommon for government agencies to share buildings, to share services. And you may say, well, they could go lease private buildings somewhere, but governments often share buildings, state government, local government, federal government, the same building. That's not uncommon. But, I mean, there is, that's a philosophy. If you don't think the city should ever lease out property, or whatever, to be in competition. You could say, right now, we're in competition in a lot of ways. Solid waste collection. Are we in competition with the private sector? Yes, we are. Should we change, should we not be in the competition with the private sector? I mean, that's a philosophical decision, similar to that. So again, you know, we, I told Mr. Yannick, we would, if they can get their agreement, and they can move back there, great. Because that has disrupted us as well, you know, with that traffic in there to somewhat. But we're coping with it, working with it, trying to be good neighbors with it. So again, it's not our issue. It's-
Well, I think Louis has a point with the concern of having a commodity that can be perceived as a competitor to the ARCO building. I don't think it's our place to advertise and try and solicit tenants from other space. This condition, the State of Kansas is a little different, in their requirements to comply with accessibility, so their choices are limited. I think that whatever we could do to get them relocated back to their original space, we should do it. We should encourage the state as much as possible and see that that could be restored. One of the things that will be clear, that the building, the space they're in, does not comply with their requirements for DCF. The separation of client and tenant, the record storage, there's so many standards that you had to comply with, with your remodeling space, that this will be temporary without major renovation of the area. And you met their requirements in the space, so I just hope that that can be worked out. But, you know, we do have an issue of our agreement. Comments?
Do I have another opportunity to add to this?
Briefly.
Briefly. And you've recited all of the things that are concerns to me. My concern is, by executing these leases, you take that opportunity from me to bring them back to my building. If there's an MOU that they have with the city, that has, they can be there for emergency purposes, well, then I've got the opportunity to bring them back to my building. Once that one-year lease, no matter what the intention is, is executed, then at that point, I don't have that opportunity. And so then, I am losing that tenant in a very real and legal way, once that execution takes place. And although I understand, I can't speak to the city trying to recruit, or if they have, I don't think, I'm not ever said that there have been here before you and the commissioners. The appearance of that is, or some could say, that that could be, you know, an issue. I have an eighth grade son came to me once, and he said, "My best friend's mad at me." I said, "Why?" He said, "Well, his girlfriend came up to me and started talking to me." And I said, "Well, why is he mad at you?" Well, she and I, she then broke up with my best friend and came to me. And I said, "Well, if I was your best friend, I'd be mad at you." And he said, "Well, no, she came to me." And in some extent, that's a crude analogy, that although I understand the city didn't recruit the state, when the state came to the city, that maybe some consideration to the current status of them with my building would have been helpful. Because I don't think I've been actually heard from anybody in the city concerning this possibility. And from the standpoint of even the single office building with the Department of Labor, I have offered them, the local gentleman, who will retire in two years, but he's informed me, I have offered them the exact same deal that the city is giving him. He says he wants to stay in the building. There is somebody in Topeka that has made the determination, they don't want him to stay in the building. They have not given any type of disagreement as to ADA or anything like that. And so in essence, all things being equal, I'm giving him the same exact deal that was before the commissioners. And someone in Topeka has decided that they would rather rent from the city. That's where part of my concern comes in, that now I'm no longer on equal footing with someone from Mr. Scott or Ethic Professional Building or something like that. If they take my tenants, that's part of the free enterprise system. If the city, if that happens, whether their intention or not, is to have the tenants in there, well, that's a different story. And I do think at this time, in this time in the history of our city, that it's important for the government and the private sector to work together. While Mr. Whitehead is correct, that the city and government often uses each other's space, I don't necessarily think that that, there's some caveats to that for Independence, and especially for this area. In certain areas of the country, that is very true, but not necessarily, that is probably the most effective thing, especially in our area.
Do you have a lease with the Department of Labor also?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a lease with the Department of Labor also?
They terminate, well, they actually, their lease expires at the end of June.
Okay.
The other two state tenants, as far as I know, no one in Topeka has intimated or given me any kind of knowledge that they would leave the Energy Defense and Department of Revenue, which is the driver's license.
Thank you.
I need to go back to them with leases, but I did need to get through with this, with ADA, and with the Department of Children and Families first.
So, motion on the tape, on the floor? Or do we want one?
Well, I was going to read the other motion back to you. And on the other one, it was, "I move that we sign the lease agreement with Kate, and this would be the Department of Labor, with a stipulation that Article 19 is removed from the requirements."
So is that your motion?
If there's no further discussion, that will be my motion.
All right, I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next. Item on the agenda, consider 2019 budget request from Main Street.
Finally.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, or as I hope you know, I'm Tabitha Snodgrass with Independence, Main Street, and I'm joined here with Julie Volker from my executive board. And in the audience, I have Mary Jo Wallace, Lisa Hugo, Jim Hayward. I think that is all of my board members here today. And we want to first thank you for allowing us to address you tonight. Independence Main Street is requesting your support in continuation of city funding for 2019, at the same level of commitment as the fiscal year 2018, in the amount of $20,000. We are proud of how we are maximizing the value of every dollar received through careful spending, staff and volunteer labor, creativity- spending, staff and volunteer labor, creativity, and leveraging many of the partnerships to achieve goals together for our city. The Board of Directors deeply appreciates your support of our program. In return, we hope that we are conducting a program that you can be proud of, by preserving and enhancing the beauty of our downtown, sponsoring events and attractions that bring locals and visitors to shop, dine, and explore in downtown Independence. We also understand that this is a time of tough financial decisions for you, but know that it is, the taxpayer's dollar is turning over multiple times in the effect of keeping our downtown alive and vital. And even as we rely on city funding, we also are serious about generating and using the funds that we get from membership dues and donations wisely. It is a great honor for me to be the Main Street Director. I love my job. I came on in September of 2016, and I have strived to be visual in the downtown, and I'd hope that anyone that has concerns or ideas that'll come to me, good and bad, they do, they tell me, "Hey, I didn't like this," or "Let's try this." So, I strive for that. I also can attest to the serious dedication of our two dozen volunteers who regularly attend board member, board meetings and committee meetings. They are the force behind such programs as our Incentives Without Walls Loan Program, which at this time, we have over $30,000 loaned out to business owners at a 0% interest rate. There also, we have our promotion committee that is, backs our Christmas, our Moonlight Madison, our holiday open houses, our parade, the St. Patrick's Pub Day crawl, our annual garage, garage sale, sidewalk sale, sorry, and our flags and our veterans banners, which you're very proud of, and most recently, our first Thursday events. We also are responsible for the Main Street Dollars Gift Certificate Program, which has reimbursed over $22,000 last year, keep funds local. We respectfully request that you deem it important to renew the funding of Independence Main Street for 2019. And I'll let Julie talk, and then if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those for you also.
Okay.
Thank you, Tabitha. I won't take much longer, because I think Tabitha did a very nice job. As a representative, I'm the treasurer for the board this year, and as a representative, I just had a couple of things I wanted to say. Number one, I don't know what percentage the $20,000 is to the city budget, but it is 28.7% of the gross Main Street income. So, it's vital to keeping the Main Street program. The other thing I really want to say is, Tabitha said it correctly, we use the money very wisely. She's a one-woman show, okay? She doesn't have a secretary. She, you know, she deals with volunteers, and they're very busy volunteers, all have full-time jobs, and she does an amazing job. But the thing that I think I have appreciated most is the dedication of taking the dollars that we have, and trying to bring people to town, to generate spending with our local merchants. We're not just planning events that are fun. The goal behind Main Street is to bring dollars to town and have them spent in our local economy. And if you look at the focus of what Tabitha works on, and the events that she plans, 90% of them, that's the goal. A good portion, our total operating budget is about 60, a little over $64,000. That includes money that we give out in gift certificates, to have people stay after one of our events and dine in a restaurant downtown. So, you know, part of the money that's in our budget actually is going back out to bring money, to keep money in town. And so, that's why I've been very proud to be part of Main Street. I think it's a challenge to keep our downtown vital, but there's a whole bunch of volunteers that are working on making that happen. So, we just appreciate your support, and the city's support of helping us keep the Main Street look good, with the banners, and helping put up banners and take down banners, and, you know, we bought a lot of the things, but we really depend on the city workers, and I have to give kudos to the city departments, and Mr. DeVore, and Mike Passour. Sorry, I shouldn't be giving, naming kudos, but they do an amazing job working and helping us keep the city look good. So, that's all I have to say.
Do you have any questions for us?
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Question?
I do not.
Thank you.
That was simple.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ladies.
It's exciting to see all the activities going on downtown.
Next item on the agenda, consider a request for the City of Independence, Kansas, to hold title to 7.39 acres of land in the Highlands Sedition for the Independence Housing Authority, and a request from Montgomery County Assistant Living LLC to exercise the option to purchase unimproved property as described in Section 17.6 of the lease between the City of Independence, Kansas, as issuer, and Montgomery County Assistant Living LLC, a Kansas Limited Liability Company as tenant, as authorized by ordinance number 4226 of the issuer. Okay.
It's a mouthful. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. On behalf of Gary Morrison, my board chairman, and myself, thank you for taking the time to visit with us, Commissioners, concerning this issue. In that visit, Commissioner Yoususi, you asked for me to kind of give a highlight of what the Housing Authority does.
Yes.
Because you, you know, you're concerned that the public, so, public, listen to me, here we go. Currently, the Housing Authority in Independence, we manage 151 units. We've, Independence Housing Authority was started in '72 for the purpose of maintaining and providing assistance to obtain HUD funds for Pinter's apartments. Since that time, we've grown. So, we have 151 units that we manage within the city limits of Independence. We administer the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Grant, which you approved last commission meeting. Currently, we are helping 49 families through those grant funds. We currently have open enrollment for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. We have expended our current grant funds, but with the grant that went to Topeka and was due tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow, we're hoping that we will get additional funding. One of the other things that we do is, we have partnered with the city for about six years now, to where the Housing Authority, it's multifaceted. One of the things that we have partnered with is on condemnation and demolition. When, you know, absolutely, the goal is for any home that is in an unsafe position to be rehabilitated and become vital again. You cannot construct new homes. We need to, you know, retain and repair what we have. But there's times when those homes are too far gone. And part of, and I've told the Commission this before, part of going for rehabilitation grants, the city itself has to do its own work. And, you know, we had tried to champion a couple of rehabilitation grants through the state. They had come down and done some tours. They didn't feel like we were doing our share of cleaning up. And so, that was a challenge for us to get those rehab grants. And so, in that, the Housing Authority Board said, "Okay." You know, the first couple of years, the Housing Authority funded the funds for demolition. And then, we started partnering with the city, and both the city and the Housing Authority put funds in there to take care of that aspect. So, one of the goals is cleaning up the community. That's one of the things that we partner with. The other thing is, for cleaning and making things look nicer, we do have a rehabilitation grant. The board, about 18 months ago, 24 months ago, I'm sorry, I should have looked that up, set aside $250,000 for rehabilitation. And so, we have, in that, 10 homes that we have worked on, they have to come in and fill out paperwork and income qualify. They have to be homeowners. They have to meet the 60% area median income or below, to meet those requirements for us. The home also has to be in a condition that it can be rehabbed. You know, there's that threshold that we have to go to. I will tell you that we, those that have applied and approved, we did not turn anyone down. So, you know, we're working through that. The challenge that we have is contractors to do the work. We have one certified contractor in Independence that can do the work. So, that process is slow. We currently have finished seven of them, and we have three more to do. And they are, one of the questions that the Commissioner asks is, you know, what are we doing? I'm anxious to talk to one of the rehab recipients. We went in and put all new windows. We put in insulation in a ceiling attic that didn't have insulation. We assisted in putting in a new electrical panel. Hers was just not safe. And so, I'm anxious to talk to her at the end of the summer season, to see how her utilities turned out. We also painted the house. You know, part of this, with the rehab grant, we kind of do a multiple threshold. First, it has to meet HQS, Housing Quality Standards. That's where we spend our money first. The second is, we go in and ask them, "Do you have any ADA needs or issues?" So, that's where we spend the money second. All along the way, we're working with the homeowner, as into what they want, but we have to meet those thresholds. And then, we go into aesthetics, you know, can we, I'm sorry, we go into winterization. You know, what can we do to make it a more energy-efficient home? And then, fourth, we go into aesthetics. You know, what is it that you want? And of course, the goal is, is that the outside of the house is attractive and nice for the neighborhood. So, that's where we spend the goal, our funds for rehabilitation. Currently, that application process is closed, because we had a certain amount of funds committed. We're spending $25,000 per unit, so we're not taking any applications now. The intent, when we look at our 2019 budget, you know, I can't speak for the board until they make that decision, but I would, I would think that the intent would be to do this program again. As always, we try to use our funds to leverage state and federal funds. So, there's that opportunity as well. The other thing that the Housing Authority does is, we do the Upper Story Grant, where we're working with our downtown buildings to try and assist them to stay viable and vital. And sometimes, a new building owner coming in, it may be a little bit of a challenge for them, just to rely on their business on the main floor, the commercial side. So, what we're trying to do is twofold, help them rehabilitate those apartment units upstairs, to where they can get income, to help with their insurance and taxes, and it's also getting people to our downtown. So, that's one of the other programs that we do. And one of the other things that we do is, we help oversee the day-to-day operations for CCAN CDI, which is a choo-dah. CCAN CDI was going under, being repossessed by the state in essence. The state came to us and asked, "Hey, would you help us with this," and down in the southeast Kansas area? So, we also oversee 16 units that are in the region. So, we do that. And then, finally, what we do is, we're finishing up the final phase of the Eisenhower subdivision. We have constructed 28 homes, or I should say, 27. We've got basement on the 28th. So, with that, we have constructed new housing for sale here in Independence. And with us finishing that up, we have long-term goals that the board has set, and that is maintaining all of the activities that I had just stated, as well as, since we finished up with this, we're looking to our next phase of land acquisition for future growth. It's not something the board's intent is to start tomorrow, with building new homes, but the board would like to obtain the land for the purpose of future growth, and land so that we can get the infrastructure in. So, it's sudden, they're waiting. We want to be proactive, instead of being in a position of having to be reactive, because when it's new home construction, that doesn't happen overnight. And we want to make sure that we have property available for any opportunities that come down the road, so that we give them choices here, rather than our competitors across the border. So, with that said, I'll open it up to any questions. This is phase one, I'm sorry, this is part one of this, because you did sign IRBs on this. We're asking that you accept the land on the behalf of the Housing Authority before we take the second step, and Sarah Steele's here to answer those questions.
Well, when we visited yesterday about it, I could see, as I explained to you, the potential not to tie it up as only Housing Authority houses, but to develop it as incentive lots for anyone to purchase, if they come to town and want to build a new home, that we would have these available within the city limits. And, you know, it's close to the school, it's infilling, and open area, so, you know, the development is conducive with the three schools, middle school's a little farther, but, you know, there's some advantages to proceeding with development. But if we restrict it with grants, it would limit it, the whole thing, to the Housing Authority only being able to develop, then we tie into their time schedule and their availability. And, you know, as it, if the lots were able to be put on the open market, it could increase maybe a little more development in that area. You know, I guess, instead of looking at it as a strictly Housing Authority project, look at how we could partner or join with to assist in opening up the land for residential development for others also.
And, you know, I can't speak for my board, because we put the plan together with what I shared with you. You know, our thought process was to recreate Eisenhower. As I said, you know, we didn't anticipate that the city had an interest in partnering with us on a development like this. As Gary stated, and I think I could say, the board absolutely would be interested in that partnership, welcome that partnership.
And I can't speak for the other two commissioners. That was just my idea, to see potential to advertise or offer it as incentives, that if a company is expanding, or someone looking to put it available, not with the timeframe of the Housing Authority, but put it available to anyone looking to relocate.
And I agree, as we've, and I shared that with you, the Eisenhower lots have always been available as well. You know, we've tried to work with developers, to give them incentives, to take those lots and develop. So, I don't see that being an issue for the board at all, because it has been there. That opportunity has, you know, been in existence.
Well, you mentioned that some of the grants that you would apply for, for infrastructure, would limit it to a certain income level or certain conditions.
That would be correct. If we were to go for funding, which was the Housing Authority's thought process, was to go for funding for moderate-income housing, so that we could leverage our funds with the state to put infrastructure in, streets and sewer, it would, as we discussed, limit that to moderate income. A family of one, about $72,000, a family of four, up to about $95,000, I think. I should have checked those numbers, but that's what it would limit to. And with your thought, if we don't go for those grant funds, or as we discussed, we may be able to do partial part of it, you know, to leverage our funds with the state, and do part of it under a grant system, to where we could get some state funds to assist with some infrastructure. But then, we would partner with the city to do other parts of it, so that there would not have those restrictions. So...
I think there's a lot more potential in the property than just going one direction right off.
Absolutely.
The bat, that we should look at all the options and see how to best benefit everyone, the city primarily.
Absolutely. Citizens and growing our tax base.
Right.
Can you help me get the fog out a little bit? So, it says that we need to sell the property to Montgomery, to Country Place.
The city currently, and Sarah, why don't you come up? Because I'm going to butcher it. She's the expert.
So, please. Thank you, April. I'm Sarah Steele with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We serve as bond counsel to the city and represent the city in this matter. The property was encumbered by an industrial revenue bond that was issued by the city in 2016, and...
For Country Place.
Correct. In order to, and they acquired the entire parcel, didn't really know quite how to carve out the piece that they were using at that point in time, but they're there now, and they've had it surveyed. they've had it surveyed, have a legal description for the property that they would like to transfer. The industrial revenue bond had Country Place Senior Living, Montgomery County Assisted Living, transfer that title to the property by virtue of the industrial revenue bond over to the City of Independence. City of Independence currently holds title under the IRB documents. There are certain documents that are recorded with the Register of Deeds relating to the industrial revenue bond. We need to eliminate those with respect to this parcel, so that it will have clear title. In order to do that, we need to have the city approve a, basically, a, a sale of this unimproved portion of the land, which is permitted under your lease. Sell, sell it back to Montgomery County Assisted Living, so then they can sell it to the city for consideration that you've agreed to. I know, it's a rather circular method.
Wow. It's not much more clear.
So, well, I apologize for that. But basically, you're, you're selling it back to them, or you're conveying it back to them, get rid of all the IRB encumbrances of record, so they can sell it to the city free and clear.
Now, when they were here first proposing their project, they talked about wanting to have room for future growth. So that's, is that...
And I can answer that. If you see the, from our side, the left, the left side of building there, that's existence, and that's what they're using. What you see on the right is for their future growth. They have a Phase Two and a Phase Three. At this point in time, I think there's still that intent, and they are keeping land to fulfill Phase Two and Phase Three. So that's what you see, that second building, for future growth.
Okay.
And, and at that point, that will complete the, when they came to the city previously, they were looking at three phases. That will complete that project.
I can't speak for them, but that is what I understand that they have conveyed to me.
I don't represent them either.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's what they have conveyed, but I can't...
So the rest of it, they want to sell to us? They're done?
Correct. The 7.39, and actually, this was something that I, I visited with, the Housing Authority has looked at this for quite some time. The prior owner, we actually visited with them. At the time, they had no interest in, in selling. When the Montgomery County Senior Living came in, I actually happened to be part of a, a group that worked with them, encouraged them to make that conversation, liked them better than they did us, and so they sold. But in that, we had visited with them, that we may have some interest, again, couldn't speak for the board, but at one, at the point in time that they decided that they didn't need the rest of the acreage, please visit with us. It fit our mission, it fit our long-term vision, and so that's where we're at today.
And how did we arrive at a price?
What they have chosen to do, we are, they are charging us, or we've made an agreement for exactly what they paid. So there's no up-charge on it or anything. We're paying exactly what they paid.
And how many people do you have on your staff?
I, we have on our staff, we have seven full-time employees.
Seems like you have so much going on.
We have a great deal. I will, I mean, I'd like to take my 30 seconds or 15 seconds. I have an amazing staff. I have an amazing team. And I have an amazing board who thinks outside the box. So I'm very lucky that I have who I get to work with. And I work and partner with the city. You've got amazing employees.
I'm impressed with your staff also, but I just sometimes worry how much you're getting on your plate with all those properties you take care of and everything. And some of the properties immediately east of Pen Terrace, don't you still own some of those?
We do.
Okay.
The lots. We have some vacant lots, and that's part of this plan as well.
And the one house, right?
We do.
Okay.
And that's currently being rehabbed. And what we are, as I stated, part of our long-term plan is, while we're in the middle of, of hopefully looking to do what we're going to do for infrastructure here, we have three to four lots that we're looking to do some infill housing.
Yeah, when I was on the Housing Authority Board, we talked a lot about that, all the empty lots around town doing infill housing. So I, I just don't want to lose sight of that.
Right. And that's one of, and, and part of the conversation that I had with Leonard, and we were seeing both, he kind of gave us a challenge that he'd like to see us think outside the box on our construction, and that's one of the things that we've...
That's because he's an architect.
I know, but it's exciting, because it, it's, it's something that, I've had those conversations with another architect in town, and so it was really nice to hear that. And we are excited, once again, we'd like to blaze a trail of, wow, Independence did this, and it's, I don't want to say unconventional construction, but we thought outside the box and tried to save on construction. So we're hoping to do that with some infill.
The existing houses you're working on, you said you've got one that's barely been started, right? And how many have sold?
Oh, we have our final cul-de-sac, which we've constructed seven, four of those have been sold.
Okay.
We have, three have taken possession, and we will be in the next two weeks, the fourth one, the owners will take possession of.
And the status of the others?
We have an application on one, we're doing the paperwork on it.
Is it completed?
It is, yes, just needs to be cleaned, but it's completed.
Fair enough.
Uh-huh. I'm telling you, those contractors, I'm going to give them an education in cleaning 101.
Hey, speaking of contractors, I don't know if you noticed on city licenses tonight, there's a new contractor.
I know.
They called me today, asking if I knew of anybody looking for a contractor, so.
We've had multiple conversations. I'm excited for them.
Thank you.
On, on the rehab, we only had one, we only have one contractor that's certified to do the rehab for the Independence Housing Authority. Are we recruiting, or trying to find other contractors?
We've tried.
Not having any luck?
We've offered, even the state has offered to bring in lead-based paint training and all of this, and we've offered to pay for the classes. We partnered with Parsons, and we couldn't get anybody to go through the training. So, and those go out for bid, I mean, they're, you know, they're publicized, they're put out for bid, so.
Your long-term goal that you talked about, what timeframe are you looking at for this development?
You know, I really can't answer that. I mean, I would say that we're, we're looking to complete it, you know, Eisenhower took us from start to finish 13 years. You know, our first homes were constructed in '07, and we're finishing up our last, but there was a, you know, quite a period there where we did a lot of thought processes and planning and that kind of thing. And that was actually led through the chamber, and then the Housing Authority figured out that they could fit that niche, that need. So, you know, I would say we're looking at a five-to-10-year period for 21 new homes. And, you know, if we ever have any kind of major economic development within the community, that could be sped up.
Sure. I like the fact that you came and you, you've given information, people here in the audience, but people that will watch us later on replay, of what it is you actually do, because from what I hear, it's strictly, well, they're just interested in, in low-income housing, or they're interested in building, you know, 125,000 to 150,000-dollar houses. And I got on a website and looked at property Zillow, and between 100 and 150,000 price range, I could come up with 10 houses that were actually listed through various real estate companies in the community. So it was refreshing to hear that there is rehab money, and hopefully, we'll have rehab money the start of next year, and we can take applications for people that, that don't fit the low end, as far as qualifying for housing or housing assistance, and don't meet, or are able to move up to the 125,000 to 150,000-dollar houses. But they have property that they could use a little help maintaining, so people that are at this income can move to the next level, and then maybe at some point in time, move into the 125,000 to 150,000-dollar house range. So it was good to hear that there is money available, and I hope people hear this, listen to this, and understand the Housing Authority will help them go through, navigate through all the paperwork.
Absolutely.
Because it is daunting, but there is funds available, and we're doing something more than just low-income in this price range. We are filling in between and trying to stabilize houses that are 70, 60, 70, 80,000-dollar houses, which would be the logical step for people that are renting at this end, move to that. And my, and then my other concern, which I brought up to you, and we talked about lengthy, was, was that I, that I get asked a lot, is that, in what you're trying to do, you're filling a need in the community, but my question has always been, we want to, we don't want to get to a point to where we are the only player in town. There's a lot of, a lot of people that have made investment, investments in property here in town, and they're trying to be good landlords, keep their property up, and I know we're filling a need, but I don't want to, them to feel like we're going to be such a player that we squeeze that market out for them, and then they, not only do they lose their investment, then they don't have any way of recouping money that they got invested in that, that property, because they just can't turn property.
And I can say that is, is in discussions of the Housing Authority Board. They don't want to be a competitor, but we have an issue here. As I stated a couple of weeks ago, you know, we had a housing meeting, the state, Kansas Department of Commerce is, is who facilitated that for us. They were very impressed with the numbers of attendance, they were very impressed with the, the giving of information and the input, and that's what's kind of charting our course, is what the public is telling us they need. We don't want to be a competitor, but we all, we want to be a resource to make things happen, and to make those improvements in availability. And, you know, once again, I've got to give kudos to my board. You know, the list of what, what the Housing Authority does, they allow staff to, to work these programs, and they always have the community's best interest at heart. I mean, they, they really, I'm very lucky.
Do we have any more questions about the item on the agenda, purchase of the property?
No, sir.
No, no, sir.
If there's no more questions about this parcel, then I'll entertain a motion.
Here's the motion app. Oh, here we go.
Yeah.
It is a complicated... I make a motion.
In this, please.
Okay. I'm sorry, I might interject. As April mentioned earlier, it might be easier if you would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of this land, the 7.39 acres, and then a separate motion to approve resolution that you have before you that will affect the necessary transfer.
Yeah, it should be in two motions. First, we need to motion to, to purchase the property, and then next, the transfers. So, do I have a motion?
So the first half of that says, "I move to hold title in the name of the City of Independence, Kansas, 7.39 acres of land in the Highlands addition for the Independence Housing Authority."
That's the motion to purchase.
Okay.
Yeah, we could just say, "I make a motion to purchase the property."
Where would be the fine in that?
Yeah, we'd actually understand what we just said.
The only reason why I didn't say "purchase" is because the Housing Authority is, is funding this. It's not out of city funds, it's Housing Authority funds. The city will be holding title for the Housing Authority. I just want the public to, you know, it's not coming out of your general fund or anything like that, it's Housing Authority funds paying for the property.
Want me to withdraw my motion, or we'll try again?
No.
No?
Yeah, just, go ahead.
I already made it.
Okay, you want to read the motion?
Sure.
What is it?
Gary moved to hold title in the name of, of the city to purchase land for, for, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading this. To hold title in the name of the city, 7.39 acres of land in the Highlands addition for the Independence Housing Authority.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So then, I make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-020, whereby Resolution of the governing body of the City of Independence, Kansas, authorize the sale and conveyance of certain 7.39 acres as shown in Schedule One, property to Montgomery County Assisted Living LLC.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
I understand it.
Thank you. Thank both of you.
Next item on the agenda, consider amending Appendix D, Chapter 38, setting forth new ambulance rates.
Mayor, every year, the federal government sets the ambulance rates. It's done at the federal level. After that is done, I get visits from our representatives, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and other insurance carriers, Medicare, CMS sends us that information. Last time we adjusted our rates was in 2010. The federal government doesn't change what they reimburse a lot every year. We do not try to get too high above the federal government, because that impacts our self-pay, low-income, people who do not have insurance. It's kind of the, they're the ones that are stuck with those bills. This year, we're just recommending a few changes. Commercial is now paying $12 a mile, which is what our rate was, and we get for the first 17 miles out of Medicare, close to $12 a mile, so we're asking to bump that up to $15 per loaded mile. We're actually lowering a little bit. We had ALS non-emergency at 650. Medicare is only paying 260, 47. Commercial's at 476, so bringing that back down to 550. And we are asking to increase our no-transport treatment. This is like a patient we respond to that's a diabetic. We respond, we treat them, give them sugar, they wake up, and then they refuse transport. Those are non-recoverable charges from insurance. If you do not transport a patient, you cannot bill insurance. So we're just trying to cover the cost of the, when we're at those type of scenes, we have them on the monitor, so you have electrodes, and maybe on a little bit of oxygen, the IV fluids. We're trying to cover a little bit of that cost, yet still make it reasonable. You don't make money, a lot of money in the ambulance business. That all changed in 2000 with the fee schedule. I mean, the federal government controls what we get reimbursed and all of that, so, I mean, if you have specific questions, I can answer. I know Commissioner Lewis sent some, and I hope that information helped you.
Yes, it did. Thank you. Did, did you get a copy of this information? I had asked what the, what the trans, now, let me get this right here. Had it in front of me, and I just lost it.
I can kind of go, he kind of asked, you know, "What's it cost us to run an ambulance call?" And if we just take the transports we do, it's $779 for that ambulance to go out and transport. And as you can see, we're getting 400, 300, 200 dollars back from insurance, you know? If we take the total number of EMS calls we respond to, that drops down to $461.21 every time that ambulance rolls out of the station. You know, if we were in a business, you would cover that expense. I mean, you would make sure that, that $779 was covered, but federal government doesn't allow us to do that. So that's some of the restrictions we play with. He also asked, just how does it break down in Independence? And in 2017, we had 9%, it varies just a little bit, but 9% to 12% self-pay, 56% of our patients were on Medicare, 16% were on Medicaid, and we had 222 patients that were commercial insurance, which were about 16%. It's pretty close in 2018, other than we're running 15% self-pay in this year.
I had asked about the amount of, of write-offs through Medicare, Medicaid, commercial. I'm going to go by memory here. I think the write-off was $504,000. I'm pretty close in the vicinity.
Yes, you are. Yes, sir.
And then, as far as those people that don't have insurance, they're not on Medicare or Medicaid, and they have no insurance at all, that total is somewhere around...
that total is, uh, somewhere around eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Correct.
Plus, plus change. And the Hassan.
Hassan Plug.
Is the, um.
Collection Agency.
Collecting Agency for that. And he has a thirty percent, uh, success rate as far as follow-up and, and trying to get that, uh, money collected. And what is, what is his percentage for, what is his collection fee?
You know, that's.
Do you have an idea?
Uh, I want to think, it was an agreement that he made with the city that Mike Borvitz would have handled, well, it actually probably been back with Jim. I think it's five or six percent.
Okay, five percent of what he, of what he collects.
If I remember correctly. He has a sta-, because he collects for not only EMS, I think Court, Kelly or Craig. There's several things he collects, uh, water bills that are, he handles several different accounts for the city. And I'm thinking it's five or six percent, but I'm not for sure. We could get that information. You think it's twenty-five? Yeah, I don't, I have.
Yeah, I don't have any idea, but it seemed awful, awful reasonable.
I know Omni is six percent. I know what that is for what they do.
And, and of the two thousand three hundred and thirty-eight EMS runs, and fourteen hundred and seventeen, go by my memory.
Transports.
Transports. Are, is that fourteen seventeen part of the twenty-three hundred and thirty-eight? Or that's in addition?
No, that's, you're correct. That fourteen's, out of the twenty-three hundred, we transported fourteen hundred patients.
So, oh, way over half are, are transported on to other, other facilities?
Yes.
Other places?
Yep.
Okay, okay. And, uh, let me see if there was anything else. I think that's all I have. I appreciate the information.
Yeah, thank you.
But do you, do you put your expenses together and send that to Omni? And then Omni bills the insurance company?
The way it works, Leonard, is when the guys do a report in our system, uh, we're required by CMS to be a paperless system. And what we do is State of Kansas provides that, uh, system. And, uh, through that system, when the guys do the reports, all reports are read by me every day, and once I do the QA and everything's there, I go into that report and click bill. It automatically goes to Omni into their system. They can then obtain it. From there, uh, they bill the claim. Uh, when they bill a claim through Medicare commercials, three months usually turnaround. Once they get a receipt, or if it's a self-pay and there's something due, they will invoice the patient for three months. Most of our patients are good about working, paying their bills, but if they do not hear anything, or if they set up a payment plan and they stop on it, they return that back to the city, and that's that eighty-nine thousand that then goes to Hassan Plug for collections.
Okay, so then, they bill and the customer pays Omni and then Omni.
Yes, everything goes through Omni, and then at the end of the month, we get a.
Check from Omni.
Checks from Omni with all of the statistics that's given to Mike.
And then the others go from the collection agency.
Back to the city.
They go to the collection agency, then.
Right.
He monthly submits payment to.
Yes, yeah.
So, we're pretty much, once you submit it.
Yeah.
We're done with just bookkeeping, then receipt and.
Yep, exactly right.
And what's Omni's?
Saves a lot of work.
Yes, yes, sir.
What's Omni's fee for?
I believe that is six percent. Six percent of the income of that month that's received.
Okay, and what, what are these, um, what are the average? I mean, uh, I, I'm sure it, well, it varies depending on how many runs you make, but on an average, or over a year, what is?
What's, what do we pay Omni, or?
No, what, what do you, um, what do they actually, what do they actually bill? Or what do we, let's see, how, I don't want to say this.
We bill out over like one point two million dollars last year.
Okay, one point two million dollars, okay. And so, the reimbursement we get from them varies from month to month. It could be, how much, low end, high end?
On an average, monthly, we get between fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a month comes back in from what we receive from Omni. Based on how busy we are, type of patients we're running. Uh, sometimes it may be fifty thousand, sometimes, you know, this past spring, when we were in the nursing homes a lot, people with Medicare, a lot of flu, we were seeing, because that insurance was paying sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars a month revenue coming in.
Any other questions?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
No further questions.
There's no other questions, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number four two seven one, setting forth new ambulance rates.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda, um, consider change order to approve asphalting to ADA stalls at the North Park Basketball Courts and the Dog Park. And we have requests from the two citizens to address on this, but do you want to present first?
As you know, YPI was here about a month ago, and also, R-Turn's been working with the Dog Park. Uh, since that time, um, I have completed ADA assessment, have been working with the U.S. Access Board, Great Plains, and just trying to problem solve. I mean, we have a group of some very good young people here. They're our future leaders of this community, and they're working hard to, uh, make our community better, giving us some, uh, much-needed things. So, we're trying to do our best, Mayor, without tax dollars to meet the ADA demands. Uh, they will both get up here and talk to you. Uh, I was talking to Mike Passour. We had a little bit of funds left over in our asphalting, and, uh, we came up with this idea. I talked to the U.S. Access Board. Uh, we sent them drawings, different things. Uh, I did see Tony's email today with his concerns. Uh, but we have spoke to the U.S. Access Board. That is an acceptable, and I understand there's some concerns there. We're going to have to do some work to make this happen, uh, where it's at, but it is an acceptable parking. Uh, it does meet the means to allow this to go. And I'm going to let Brett speak to you what he's doing in the courts and happening there. Uh, at the Dog Park, you know, they originally wanted this parking to the west of the pad, but this was an alternative that we're able to do and to help them out and to get this ADA compliant. And, uh, so I'm just trying to help, we're trying to help them out, be a good neighbor, and get this done without spending a lot of tax dollar monies, using some monies that we have. And with that, I don't know which one you want to start with, Leonard. You have Michael Ususi and Brett Kelly here, or if you have questions specific?
Yeah, on, on this plan, you know, the. They're both indicated van, so I guess.
One's going to be van, one is going to be car.
So, the car's going to have to come in from the north and the van from the south. But, you know, the, I guess, uh, the lack of a total plan for the area is an issue of where do you go from there? It's like each time, we're addressing just one piece. And we've neglected the whole project that, what's the plan for other pavement? What's other plan? Is it going to be gravel? Is the, the initial latch on the gate as an ADA accessible either?
Yeah, we are, working that issue.
So, who's working the issue? Is it R-Turn, or is all this falling back on the city?
R-Turn is, and I got to give these guys credit, Brett and Michael and this group, they work hard. Uh, I'm, I'm kind of a sounding board a little bit. I'm using my references at the U.S. Access Board and Great Plains, and I'm learning too. I mean, uh, I've only been, been doing this part of it for a year. Uh, but we're reaching out. Michael sent me some pictures of, where was it, in Kansas City? Shop Lee Summit of some handles that they use to meet ADA access. So, he's using me as a reference. We're following up to get them ADA compliant. But these guys are working hard, and, uh, they're doing a lot of the work. And, uh, I'm just trying to help them meet that ADA requirement. We do have a complaint, as you're aware, on the Dog Park, and, uh, so we're just trying to help them out.
Well, you know, where's the, I, I guess, Michael should field some of these questions that, um, you know, there's just a lot of, lot of open ends. Like, where's the total site plan? Where are you designating parking? How are you going to do that? ADA was primed because of the new construction, there's no, no tolerance of coming in. The complaint actually can be filed, and ADA is a law. It's, it's not a recommendation or a code, and with that comes action. So, you know, here's another piece. If we just look at, at the paving, it's up against the fence. Or you can use a lay-down machine, I assume they would, to place the asphalt. Now, you've got grade concerns and elevations with the existing slab and, you know, it, there are just a lot of pieces open-ended that, um, we, sometime, we're going to need them all put together, and it just keeps getting, getting worse. Is there a, a site plan?
Uh, I think if Kelly has the slide.
Kelly?
So, this is not very good, but, um, at least it will give you a concept of, we are, we already have the money, we already have the plan. Um, I would just like to point out, uh, Wolfstock was our opening event. That was officially a year ago, um, this month. And so, we've been able to kind of realize the needs of the park and assess them and talk to, uh, David and other city officials on, onto what we need. And, um, he, he calls me every time that there's a problem, and we've addressed it, um, as soon as we can. And the ADA concern has just been a month ago. And since then, um, we've already started looking at the latches with Woods and their vendors and trying to get that going. Um, but this would allow us, there's not the benches or the water hydrants on this picture, but, um, there will be a, a resting spot, um, access to the water hydrants, uh, resting area, turnaround point, um, be able to go to the, to the benches and to the waste stations with this layout.
But do you have a developed site plan? I know Cornerstone did a survey, and did they locate the fence on it for you?
Yes, they did, and it is.
Is there an actual two-dimensional drawing?
There is.
That shows where your parking's going to be, how all this relates and ties together?
Um, no on the parking. Um, we didn't, um, know what to plan. Um, we wanted to wait the year and kind of see how busy it was. I mean, like the city, we got money from individual donors, and we didn't want to waste money. Um, we didn't want to spend money where we didn't have to. We wanted to see how many people actually visited the park and what they actually did for parking. Um, most people don't want to carry the, uh, dogs in the vehicle, so we didn't know if they were going to walk to the park, if they were going to park at the other park and walk down. So, we didn't plan on parking. We didn't know that just because we don't have any parking listed doesn't mean you don't have to have ADA parking. And I think that's the situation that we're at right now. Um, we didn't know, I mean, technically, there's no parking stalls. Um, there's no designated area for parking. People just park on the grass or the loose gravel that's off to the side. So, we did not know that the ADA parking had to be, be there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's where maybe we've failed you, that we have the knowledge that basically anything that's built has to comply, that's public particularly, has to comply with ADA. And that's something that we should have relayed to you initially to make sure it was in your, in the scope of your work. And, uh, I think that's what I'm concerned that we, we're just looking at pieces that we just keep developing problems instead of giving them an outline of what's expected and that they can convey it back. And, you know, a, a, a concept like this, it's good. It gives a general idea, but it doesn't give the facts that, you know, in writing, whether it's verbal or directions that you know where you're working to, that you're utilizing your time more efficiently. That, like you said, if you hadn't known that you had ADA parking, that would have affected a lot of things initially. Your concrete slab, the elevation of it.
And, and we knew that.
Presents a problem for handicap?
Uh, I've had conversations with, uh, Sean Clapp and Don Kocheen. Um, they were out there when it was poured, and they, they did tell us that it was, um, non-compliant. Uh, we're waiting on two terminal posts still. There is going to be fencing all around that with just one access point. So, that's one of the reasons why I wasn't real, really concerned. I didn't realize it was going to take so long to get those terminal posts there. Um, but no one builds fence in the winter for some reason. So, um, we're waiting on a, a minimum order. So, once a minimum order goes to the vendor, they'll ship ours with the other people that are ordering. That being said, we didn't want to fence it off until we could get gravel or concrete. We're, we had a person lined up to do concrete, and then it just kept on falling through and falling through. And we just couldn't get someone there. So, the alternative that we're doing is going to be AB3 rock, which is something that the R-Turn Group will be able to accomplish, um, through Don and through Sean and through just Woodslumber and other people with knowledge. It will be of slope, it will be tamped down. And then I believe Sean Turner with Trans Systems will also help us develop a plan.
Well, AB3 is a little rough for ADA accessible. If you're looking at cart paths, the, uh, the screening is similar on, it's a lot smaller rock. The AB3 is three-quarter inch rock, and it doesn't lay down real flat. So, it, it would present a problem with, with handicap. But if you use the screenings, it'll lay down tight and give you the, the surface and, and you can control the, the, the slope and the grades a lot easier. One of the things, looking at the, the location of the parking and what you're going to do, you really need to work that out with the, the improvements, the fence, because you're going to have to have enough room between what you're planting and the, and the asphalt and the connection of the sidewalk that, you know, the diagram, not to scale and sketch, it really needs, you've got elevation problems, that you've got grades. The, the ADA parking area is very limited on slope. And, you know, when you just work from that aerial, you don't see all the problems. And if you go down and the asphalt's not set and your base isn't set within those parameters, then you're back to square one. So, you know, who's going to do that and who's going to make sure that it's right? You know, that's.
Sean, he just did this drawing so you guys can see, but he's going to ensure that all of the ADA is met, and we have a spec once we get past this.
So, are we going to pay him to draw it up too?
I don't know that he's on this. I think he's helping him out on this part.
Okay. So, their hourly charge is pretty.
Yes.
Significant. Beg, plead, cry.
When we first started out, and I don't know if JJ's there anymore, um, but he did, he did offer to help us out in the original plans. And we just haven't had a need to, to contact him, but.
You got a need now. Yeah, yeah. That, that's my concern is we, we got to get it all worked out so that you guys don't just keep running into dead ends. You know, get the scope of the work defined and get your elevations and the requirements for, for ADA through the whole, the whole place. Because probably your water hydrants are going to have to be addressed for bowls and watering that somebody in a wheelchair or, or handicap can operate those just as anyone else. those just as anyone else.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of issues. Do you have any idea what, what type of money you're looking at to, to finish?
To finish?
To tile the loose ends up and, and make this compliant? Do you have any idea?
Not on the outside of the fence. On the inside of the fence, we're estimating about $3,000 to $4,000. And hopefully, it should be done this summer. It should be starting soon. We have that money already. We had it, budgeted in Phase Two, which we're still trying to finish up. And the outside, if it, if it's all on us as the Dog Park Group, we estimate it's probably gonna be $10,000, if not more. That's probably a low estimate for the two parking stalls and the sidewalk, as well as any other things that need to be addressed. It'll probably take us 18 months to two years to get the fundraising for, and then two to three months to, to complete the process. So, as, as opposed to the $1,500, with the help of the city, the $10,000 looks really high, but we understand that it's the taxpayers' money, and we, we built this trying to get the, the younger generation involved, and, and trying to just get them to move back to Independence and, and share their ideas. And, and I think we've really enhanced the quality of life just with this dog park. And I, so far, we spent $14,000 on the dog park, which was just sitting idle, and that was no city money whatsoever. And if, if I may, I'd like to just point that out, because there are some people out there that don't know. Year-to-date, the city, the city's land was sitting idle. We put $14,000 into it. We do appreciate the city for letting us use the water. They mow and they maintain it, and they provide insurance. Other than that, there has been no city money that has gone directly to the construction up until this point.
And it's used quite a bit.
Yes.
There's a lot of people.
I was there last night fixing holes.
So, if there's no other questions, you wanna take a, I'll take a motion concerning this parking area?
I'm not sure where we stand right now. You made it sound like we need to do some more planning before we, before we make a motion to approve asphalt. Are you satisfied that the plan we have is adequate?
You know, the concept is good. I think before the asphalt's placed, there's a lot of things that have to be worked out, and, and that's, you know, depends who's gonna do it, if the city's gonna do it and...
City's gonna do it. We're gonna get the pad, we're gonna prep that, get it done, work with Sean, get it, get the asphalt. Reason we're here, Leonard, is we have a one-shot with Hecker. We have a little leftover from the money. It's, and street guys are gonna help out on these two pads to get it, meet the spec, get it done, and get this part done, so we can meet ADA compliant. If it wasn't for, we just have this one-time shot.
Right. Well, Hecker is here already.
Why he's here, the money, that's the only reason we're here in such a hurry.
Okay, I'll make a motion then. I move to approve a change order with Hecker to asphalt two ADA parking stalls with a cost not to exceed $5,000 from the overlay project fund.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you. The other areas at the basketball courts, I think we got two things with the, the courts.
Yes.
One is, Brett, do you want to present your ideas first, and we'll talk about the parking second?
Yep, yep, seems like two separate deals to me.
They are.
So, I'm president of YPI, I'm Brett Kelly, and we've been around for two years, growing exponentially. We've got 70 members at this, at this point. At the beginning of the year, we got together and said, let's have a fundraiser, which we're having a golf tournament, and use the money that we have currently and money that we'll gain from that to have a community improvement project. We got together and decided the basketball courts were a bit of an eyesore, so we're looking at the Park Street, Scott Hastings Basketball Courts. We really wanted to put some lipstick on the pig here initially, and we thought, well, just, we'll do it ourselves, and we would put, we'd resurface it, do the cracked ceiling and all that. We've since been talking with Hecker, and they have given us a quote of $1,000 to $2,000 to do it professionally. They would level it. We'd have to take out a couple of courts, or a couple of the goals to do so, but they would do a really nice job, I'm sure of that. So, we were looking at doing the asphalt resurfacing. We really wanted to go in and do, make it look nice, and do painted half-court logos. We would do fresh boundary lines, so we'd have three-point lines, and free throw lines that, which aren't there currently. We have been speaking with Westar about potentially relighting it, but I understand that would be a, a city expense, so we would revisit that if they did decide to donate the lighting for us. As we were planning this, David came to me and noted that the sidewalks and the parking is not ADA compliant, so that if we were going to do the basketball courts, potentially, we needed to do the parking and sidewalk as well. As far as our thoughts on projected costs, this would be all YPI's funding, but we're looking at somewhere between $2,800 and $3,000 for resurfacing, and then potential donating of the painting, the logos by a local artist, and then we have someone that can do the striping for us. We would do some painting on the, the goalposts just to make them prettier, but they seem to be intact from our point of view. Conservatively, we're looking at 10-year lifespan. Usually, if it's done professionally, it can last up, or the resurfacing can last up to 25 years if we're lucky, but we feel 10 years would be conservative. We don't think there would be any additional upkeep from the city. The rec does all the mowing around it currently, and we don't feel any change would have to come inside the court. So, as far as, what we're asking is for the, the city to allow us to continue planning and/or working on the courts if we got approval.
Yeah, I looked at the court, and the pig was dead, I think.
Okay.
That was a little more job, you know, the, the one-inch overlay. I'm glad to hear that you've contacted Hecker, and they will level it up. I don't know how, the, the north end of it is, is terrible. So, I think that, yeah, my question was, how are you gonna put the one-inch asphalt down with the fence up and, and all those issues? I thought it carries over now to the parking. You've got the parking shown on the south side of the street.
Yeah. We worked with the Access Board, and...
But you've got some issues with that.
There is some elevation that we would have to put that in, and then grade it back, so that we didn't have to do a retaining wall or anything like that. And I've spoke with Mike Passour about that.
But then, you've also got the accessible route that crosses a street, which isn't compliant. If they're gonna have Hecker do the basketball court, why don't you look at relocating the parking to the north side, so that you can lay down the apron from the street into the...
We could do that.
And then you eliminate your ramps and your concrete walk, because you could have the walk between the, the cars and the fence. And, you know, it would be, it should be cheaper for both than doing the little patch across the street. And then do the tennis courts, if you incorporate it into, to one area, they could start with their machine at the street, lay to the north, and, and get it wide enough for the spaces and the, the aisle and the sidewalk. And, you know, for that, you could even maybe include a little bench area outside. You know, I think if you look, it would end up cheaper by doing it all asphalt, and it'd eliminate the two curb cut ramps.
Yeah, I mean, it does do that. They are curb ramps that will have to eventually be placed. I don't know if you look at them, they're not compliant.
Yeah, but they don't have to be until we overlay that street. So, if we're not intending to overlay, we can get another 10 or 20 years on that.
Well, there is a storm drain on the, be the north side, northwest corner, yes.
Yeah, I think you'd miss all...
Yeah, if we moved it.
It would require city crew to cut out a curb and prepare that, but...
Mike shook, he said that he could handle it.
Yeah, that's only a saw or a jackhammer, right?
We just went there, Leonard, because, as I told the Access Board, that used to be a parking lot. I didn't know if you guys wanted us putting a curb cut in and doing that, so I mean, that's what...
Yeah, you know, it makes...
If you're okay with that.
It makes sense with what you're showing, but in the long term, where they're gonna have Hecker with a lay-down machine, and you're looking at the two areas.
Yep.
I don't know, I think you could incorporate it all into that one area and be a much nicer...
Okay, we can do it.
Nicer project, so.
So, what, what type of money are you, are you looking at by moving the parking lot to the north? What, what are you estimating that cost to be?
Our cost from Hecker is $1,500 for the asphalt. We didn't know what he was gonna do mobilization. It's $1,500 for the asphalt in both places, Dog Park there. We set $5,000 just in case he hit us with a mobilization charge.
And they didn't include the concrete costs either. So, you know, in the end, I think, I think you can make it cheaper.
Right, yeah.
So...
I don't know whether this ties into this or not, but what are, what are the ADA plans? Do we actually have a comprehensive plan for the, for this whole ballpark area? Because there are...
There's ADA issues.
ADA issues with that.
Transition plan right now, and I know when I was talking to the Access Board, they were on Google Earth looking at this, and they said, oh my, when they scanned over and looked at the ballparks, we have so many issues. Oh, to the point where they said you'd almost be better wipe it out and start over.
Well, that's what, when I've looked at it, it's been about the same. I didn't go, wow, but it was bad. And, you know, one thing to think about is, when the sunset is on the, once it's special sales taxes, look at the cost. It would be nice to relocate the ballfields to the soccer field area and get some consolidation of restrooms and snack bar, and, you know, see if we could get some support. And by the time you look at ADA issues at the ballfields there and the parking problems, there's gonna be a significant amount.
Significant, yes.
So, do we have any questions for, for Brett?
No, no, I don't.
But thank you. It's awesome. Yeah, what a great project. Flash.
So, our, I guess first, for YPI, their request to renovate the basketball courts, I think we've been presented enough information that they can work along with determining the parking area. So, do we want to go ahead and make a formal approval of, of their concept for the basketball courts? If we do, I'll entertain a motion.
You want to tackle this one?
Uh, go ahead. You're a little more experienced than I am. I don't want to hear how you present this.
No pressure. I move, I move that we approve YPI's plan to update the basketball court, courts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Next, for the parking, I could make a motion that I, I make a motion that we approve the two ADA parking spaces relocated to the north side of, what street is it?
Sycamore.
Sycamore, and consolidate it with the asphalt work on the basketball courts.
Okay.
Motion, so is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Did you get the motion?
Yeah, I did, and then the North Peter Pan.
That's the next. And we, we have received a cost for laying asphalt on the temporary gravel connection between the concrete and the existing pavement. Ms., do you want to present the costs on that?
Yeah, now that we got our bids for our local street work, it's much, much lower than the bids would, would have cost us if we'd have done it, you know, in that transition with the contractor was there. At the time, we looked at it, the cost was prohibitive, and no one thought it would be any different. And, but we didn't know how long the, it would be gravel. We thought, you know, a couple of months, maybe three months. And what we're still hearing is the state's reviewing it, that's what we're waiting for, because then we have to rebid it, has to go out to, for a separate contract. And we're still waiting to hear from that approval to go out to bid. They've told us it may be late summer or early fall. And then we got a notice last week on the paper, it had a March 19 bidding day, and it put us into a frenzy, but I'm told that that's, they, they tend to put it out far like that, just, I guess, to cover themselves, but what we're hearing is it's still kind of on schedule for late summer and this fall. Anyway, it's a long stretch. But now that we've got our bids, and we don't need to do eight, eight inches of asphalt that the state would have required us to do, we're just gonna do a three-inch asphalt. I think that will be sufficient for two or three months for the traffic that, that takes, so... And as you say, we're piggybacking on the bid that we got, and we have enough funds left in that $150,000 to do all the streets, Fifth Street that we're doing, plus what we're talking about here tonight. It's about $4,200 projected cost.
And then, won't it add some cost later, because we'll have to bust it up again?
Yeah, yeah, it's three inches. I don't know how, what that would cost, but it won't be over the total project, yeah.
Because they're gonna have to excavate the gravel possibly anyway, so...
Yeah, they'll just get a loader, and I'll, I'll get a loader and take care of it in a couple of minutes.
Will you? I want to watch.
Take care of a lot more, probably with it.
So, any, any questions about that change order? So then, there's no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve a change order with Hecker to patch the gravel stretch on North Peter Pan. How's that?
It sounds...
Good enough.
Amateurs.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, reports. We have city board minutes for the library attached. Are there any questions concerning the library board minutes?
No.
No.
No question, then. Next is city manager's comments.
I have one comment. Maybe some of you know, but Amanda Williams, our first world reporter of the fourth estate, from the Independence Reporter, this is her last meeting. She will be leaving, the reporter, and, and seeking opportunities of her own business, so... So, this is her last meeting. Just like to thank her and wish her well. She's done a good job covering...
Good luck, yeah.
Being the watchdog on government here.
Oh, we're gonna miss seeing you. Well, we're going to miss seeing you.
Because it's so much fun.
So I said this is your last meeting, and she said, well, as a reporter.
Good luck to you.
Letter to the editors, right? Okay, the next item, commissioners' comments.
I, I do have a comment tonight. I would like to tell you about my summer vacation, you know, my last couple of days. I don't know if you're generally aware of this, but Tyson Foods asked Coffeyville to put together a team and go down and visit their facilities so they could see what they'd be getting, and I was invited to go along with them, as was a representative from Cherryvale and Caney. So we went down there yesterday and got back this afternoon just in time for the meeting, which is why you smell the odor on me, I'm sure, but the place is absolutely fascinating to me. It's, it's so automated, you can hardly believe it. The chicken hatchery, for example, they bring the eggs in in trucks. They're in great big trays, about half the size of this table, and each one has like 1,000 eggs, and they stack them 15 high, so you got just huge numbers of eggs. And they bring them in, they put them right into these incubators that's, you know, dark, but it's temperature-controlled, humidity-controlled, and the, when the chicks hatch, the robots, they have robots that pick them up, and, I mean, it's amazingly automated. And then the chicks are taken back to the barns where they're raised, and it is quite a process. I was very impressed, and the Tyson people were good, and everybody who met seemed like they'd been there for 20, 30, 40 years. And the way they said it is, they consider us dating, you know, not yet engaged, but they are very serious about building a facility in Coffeyville. And I, I am fully in support of it now, that we went, I mean, we went through every aspect of it, from the place where they, the chickens are, you know, laying the eggs, the eggs are hatched, the chickens grow up in these barns, and then they're taken, we actually went through the entire plant where they, as they say, harvest the chickens. But it's just a really state-of-the-art process and really very, very little odor, you know, no waste, no waste anywhere that's not taken advantage of pretty much. So I look forward to the rest of you gentlemen having a chance to go down and see the place. It's really something. And they, they're very serious about their next facility being located in Montgomery County. So I don't know the timeframe, they, they don't know the timeframe, but it's really something to see. So, anyway, that's all I had.
Was this in Arkansas, northwest Arkansas?
Uh, Springdale, yeah.
So if we're dating, are they paying the way or we've got to go Dutch?
They're planning to spend about $365 million, so I'd say they're paying.
I guess we plan on a chicken dinner then with them.
There you go.
Did they, by chance, indicate any timeline?
They said they just don't know.
They just don't know.
You know, they, it's a huge capital investment for them, and they're always looking, you know, capital is always constrained, just like we are here, so they're looking at, they've bought, they've bought a lot of their competitors, they've just recently bought another one. But, you know, they, they said, we, right now, we're planning on our next facility will be in Montgomery County. But again, no timeframe, so.
Okay. Louis, do you have any questions or comments, I mean?
No, no, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Last week, or last commission meeting, we had the corrective action plan update. We just got it at the meeting and didn't really have a chance to review it. Commissioners, have you reviewed it yet? Did you have any questions regarding that?
I didn't.
We talked about going over it. There was...
I'll try and answer your questions, you know, Mike's not here, he's excused, but I may be able to answer your questions. It'd be better if Mike was here, but...
There was a note, I didn't mark it with my highlighters, but something about reworking the 2017 entries. Was that just going through and, and fine-tuning and collecting? It wasn't a total rework of everything, was it? Or is that my question?
It, it's complicated, and when the 2016 audit was done, that's when we finally got those numbers, the final numbers for balances in all the funds at the end of 2016. Prior to that, of course, going from, prior to that, all the 2017 going forward to now were based on some projections of what that fund balance would be. So now, having the number, we had to go back and start in January and work through every month to, with the beginning balance and then the ending balance for all the funds. I'm told it, and it's not that simple, because as you go through that, you find issues. And you find corrections, and things you have to do, and you find errors early on in the years. And so, we've been diligently working that, we're up to April now, and that's taken some time, though, that's not easy to do. So it's very complicated. I say, Mike could explain all the details of exactly what that entails, but, but that's, that's why it's not, we're almost there. And once we get up to where we are now currently, you know, then we'll be caught up. But again, it's just those, just those beginning and ending balances for each month. So when you look at a treasurer's report right now, it's technically not accurate. It was based on the projections we had, that was accurate, but we have to adjust those going forward.
Yeah, that was, in the ending balance of fourth quarter and beginning balance of first quarter 2018, there was a big jump there immediately. But how does that affect then the schedule for the 2017 audit? That was, I guess...
Well, we'll be, we'll, we'll have the data accurate. So when the auditors come in for 2017, they'll start looking for, yeah, for 2017, in July or the end of July, 2017 will be accurate. So they'll look back and they'll see, because, because we've had to, there was a system in place that Mike inherited, and I can't explain it, but it was complicated, had some issues with it. We basically, working with another accountant, had to rework that to start over in January, and they've gone through several different aspects of that. And I think I mentioned, that is just a transition plan to get us through this part, because these bank reconciliations and so forth should be, should have been done in our financial software encode. So that's, this is a transition to get us to encode. Once we get caught up here, then we'll move into the encode, and that's where it'll be, it'll all be done in that instead of a offside spreadsheet. That's my layman's explanation of my understanding of what's happening. But it is very complicated. I mean, they found things in Edcode where checks were shown cleared, but they weren't cleared. So you have to go back and you have to, things like that, finding those, and that goes way back, you know, to early 2017.
So, in the past, the audit started in April and then finished in September. So, how does, you're, you're saying the auditors will start now in July? So, we're not expecting to have a September completion on the audit?
Right, no. No, we're starting late. I mean, we didn't know we needed to get a new auditor until real late, and we found an excellent auditor by all accounts. And so we've, they've got, obviously had commitments that they're doing, so we've, we've, but they, they, again, I can't give you the start date, I think it was late July, early August. But they have guaranteed that they will meet statutory needs. I mean, statute says, you know, December 31st, but it's still just kind of a, it's looked upon as kind of a guideline, if you will, is going past it like we did. It's not that serious an issue, but they have guaranteed we'll meet that.
Okay.
So hopefully sooner than that, they, it just depends on what they find, how long it takes them. But, but like I say, they're, they're an excellent auditing firm, and I'm looking forward to them to keep going.
Well, shifting auditors, everything that kind of been set up automatic, you know, Yurkies Michelle had done it, and you kind of knew each year, so have they been able to give a list of what they...
Yes, we have that list. They have given us the preparatory list that you typically get from an auditing firm, so we have that to get that, all that ready for when they come on site, so we'll be ready.
Okay. Well, that was what I was wondering, when it called that out in the corrective action plan, what the extent, how that affected our end result again, so. Okay, that's the only thing I want to follow up. We did talk at last meeting that we would go over
Right.
the corrective action plan this time, and it wasn't on the agenda, and I didn't realize it until I was getting stuff ready this afternoon, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure with Mike not being here if we discuss it, but I hope I answered your questions. If you have any others, just email me or, and we'll, we'll come, we'll prepare another report for the...
Okay, well, Mike be at the next...
So the second meeting, we go to the first meeting.
The first meeting.
First meeting, yeah.
Will Mike be at the next commission meeting, or is it just then?
We'll see.
See, okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public concerns. We had no requests other than what we had already received.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. May I possibly issue a retraction of something I said a moment ago?
About harvesting?
I just want to make sure I didn't get caught up in the moment, which I'm thinking I did and said like, Tyson is definitely coming. Did I say that, Amanda?
Yeah, they, they said, we're considering this dating, we're continuing to research, we want you to research us, we want to make sure it's a good match, but our hope is to build our next facility in Montgomery County.
Well, I didn't put my cast iron skillet with grease on the fire yet.
I was just worried about Amanda at her last meeting as reporter saying, oh, it's a definite, it's not.
Yeah.
I apologize for that if I misspoke.
Yeah.
Caught up in the passion of the moment.
A bird in the hand is worth...
Yeah, sorry about that.
Craig, as far as, there's some, I'll email you, there's some documents that I'd like Mike to provide for me, and I'll get a list together and I'll email it to you.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a complete list here.
Sure.
The next item on the agenda is executive session, and I've moved that we recess for an executive session for the discussion of an employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-43, 19B1. The open meeting will resume at, what do we need, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, 20 minutes? So we'd resume at 8:33.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We need to extend for another 15 minutes, so that would be 8:48, 8:49. So do I have a second?
Second.
In favors?
He got first, he was a little ahead of me.
Favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Commission is back in session. We have no action to take from our executive session, and at this time, I'll call an adjournment of the meeting.
All right.
Great.